Good afternoon and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board meeting. We are opening our meeting and calling to order. Is there approval of the agenda?
I move for approval of the agenda.
Isn't, yes, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes for zero. Are there any public comments regarding closed session items? No, there are not. Given that, we will recess to closed session and return to open session at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board meeting. We're so happy to have everyone tonight and we are reconvening to open session. We did take action in closed session. The board took action to approve the appointment of Ms. Allison Jing as the Purchasing and Warehouse Director with a vote of four to zero made by Trustee Kuziak with a first motion and Trustee Raymond with a second motion. Oh, yes. Allison, welcome. We're so excited to have you on board. Would you like to say any words?
I just want to thank everybody for this amazing opportunity that I never would have expected a year ago when I started working here at the district. Appreciate it.
We're so lucky to have you and congratulations.
Thank you.
The board also took action to approve, oh wait, wrong page, to approve the settlement agreement between Page versus Castro Valley Unified School District with a vote of four to zero by Trustee Kuziak with a first motion and Trustee Raymond with a second motion. And Vice President Kuziak will now read our mission statement.
Thank you, President Whitaker. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you, Vice President Kuziak. And so that everyone is aware online and in the room, we want to provide some public comment instructions in case you wanted to come and comment on things that we're talking about at the board. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form in the back there blue or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us/publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Now we get to the fun part. Our, oh. Oh, I forgot something. So we do need to take a vote from the board to take action on the stipulated expulsion for case zero six dash twenty-two slash twenty-three?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to make a motion to approve the stipulated expulsion.
Just following you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond.
Yes, I'm sorry, everybody.
No, no worries. Trustee Howard.
Yes, again.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes and the motion passes for zero. Thank you for reminding me.
Our Director of Child Nutrition, who we actually voted to approve last time, is here. So come on up.
Molly, we would love to have you say a couple of words and we're very excited to have you as well.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Molly Pah. I'm the new Child Nutrition Services Director here for Castro Valley. I am really excited to be on board. I have a lot of prior history in child nutrition. I was in Pleasanton for a year and I was at New Haven Unified in Union City for three years in a similar capacity. I am also really excited that the district is on board with my vision of going to scratch cooking. It's not going to be overnight. It's going to be a long process. A lot of it is infrastructure and staffing. But just knowing that we're on the same page, it excites me because I have a lot of things that I want to do and just knowing that everybody feels the same way, just like, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we will move on to our school report and recognition. Superintendent Ahmadi.
That's the exciting part now. That's right. So I'll invite Dr. Hussani to come and start us off. It's exciting to have Chabot here.
Thank you. Thank you, CVUSD trustees. Good evening and thank you Superintendent Ahmadi and the executive team for this opportunity to present a few highlights from our school district. I'd like to take a few moments to welcome the folks who are here this evening. We have Chabot students, we have Chabot staff and families here, so thank you for being here. Our presentation tonight, in our presentation tonight, we will highlight two sample activities from our school year that demonstrate our commitment to our district's core values specifically related to empowering our students to thrive in their own academic journey and embracing the gifts and talents of all students so they may pursue academic excellence. I will share about the Chabot Drama Club and musical and Ms. Howe will share about Chabot's first Science and Engineering Night. I would like to begin by sharing our school vision. At Chabot Elementary School, we will meet the social, emotional, physical, behavioral, and intellectual needs of our diverse community of learners to ensure that each student is challenged and successful. This year, we're bringing back the Chabot Musical in person. The musical program is over forty years old. It is a very special part of our school history and culture. The program has evolved over the years and is now an after-school drama club. The Drama Club is an enrichment program for our fourth and fifth grade students. I would like to thank in advance the Chabot Musical Directors and all of the volunteers for their countless hours of work on the Chabot Musical. This wonderful experience for our students would not be possible without their dedication and contributions. The Chabot Musical provides an inclusive and affirming learning experience for our students. An inclusive and affirming education is based on a group's strengths. At Chabot, all fourth and fifth grade students who are interested in participating in the Drama Club have the opportunity to do so. This year, one hundred and seven students, or sixty-six percent of our fourth and fifth grade students, are participating in the Drama Club. As students develop artistic literacy, they develop transferable skills that enhance their personal, academic, and later on their professional endeavors, including strengthening their self-confidence, social, emotional, and communication skills. Participation in the Drama Club also provides opportunities for self-expression and creativity, collaboration, teamwork, and problem-solving. It provides an opportunity for our students to explore, strengthen, and to showcase their artistic gifts and talents. The Chabot Musical also provides opportunities for family participation and community involvement. Volunteers help in many ways, including creating props for the stage or doing the hair and makeup for the cast. Former Chabot families who no longer have students at Chabot still come back to help with the musical. Our students have worked very hard and are excited to showcase this production. While the production is the end result of the team's efforts and hard work over the last several months, the focus has been on the process. Our hope is to foster self-confidence, self-expression, cooperation, and teamwork in a safe, affirming, inclusive, and fun environment for our students. We hope you can join us for this year's musical performance. At this time, I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Howe, who will share information about Chabot's first Science and Engineering Night. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Hello, good evening. My name is Natalie Howe. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Chabot. I want to share with you some of the cool things that happened at our very first Science and Engineering Night. This was something that was planned by a group of parent volunteers as well as staff members at our school and many students and families got involved. It was open to all K through five students and they were creating science research projects and visiting different STEM booths. And if you look at the pictures up there, we had a display of all of the trifold experiments that were done with groups of students for a gallery walk format. And there were all different types of topics. Some students did potato battery. They did magnetism, as you can see, how soap works, sundials, color-changing flowers. It really was a diverse representation of all the sciences. And it was really neat to see some of them. If you look at the soap, how does soap work more closely? They had some hands-on things. So even though they did the experiments and found their results, they offered a chance for people walking by to also do a little hands-on activity. The trifolds were provided by our parent club and the display was really amazing to see. You could definitely see the engagement with the families walking through. I got, I got the chance to do it. The research projects, especially addressing the core values, were part of the scientific methods. So going through all of the different things, asking questions, gathering information, making hypotheses, et cetera. After the gallery walk, students were able to walk around the quad area and visit different STEM stations and other stations that were hosted by high school students and middle school students. There was a catapult that the students got to see how it worked. There were stations like building. I, oh, I don't think I have a picture of that one. Oh, there we go. There's a picture of students who were working to build a, the tallest structure they could using just five marshmallows and spaghetti, dry spaghetti. They were also doing building activities, if you look in the upper left-hand corner with blocks, and seeing how they could support the structure best at it, at the base, and then get it to its tallest height. There was a group of students who had created the robot you see on the right-hand side and students were given the opportunity to use the remote control to actually move the robot around and the goal was to pick up a ball and throw it. Other things included circuitry. You've got the one where the kids were putting together the different pieces, making sure to connect positives to negatives and then eventually they flipped the switch and hoped that whatever they were trying to make move, the light bulb, the motor, et cetera, would work. And then they also had a Harry Potter wand station, which was really cool, using copper tape, popsicle sticks and such. They were able to actually create a wand that would light up in the end. Instructions and for anyone who got frustrated, they had paper instructions that they could take home for later. Overall, though, it was a wonderful night. There was a lot of students and families that came to the event and showed their support and we're hoping this might become something that we do annually because it was really a great opportunity for students and families. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to recognize and honor our two thousand twenty-three Chabot Student Citizen of the Year and our Parent Volunteer of the Year.
Good evening. I'm looking for Ilah Sandhu. Did I pronounce it Ilah? Please come on up and join us. All right, I'm, I'm. All right. I'm going to say a few nice words about you here, but it's clear by the reaction that you're very well-loved at your school. So I would just like to say that the governance team along with Chabot Elementary School, we are proud to honor you tonight. Ilah is a dedicated, responsible student and a positive role model. She constantly puts forth her best effort both academically and socially. I hear you are kind and respectful to those around you and you're a good friend to all. In the classroom, Ilah enjoys learning new subjects, works hard, asks questions, and listens for understanding. She turns in her assignments on time and earns good grades. Ilah exemplifies collaboration by sharing her ideas and insights with others to promote learning for herself and her classmates. She is an excellent teammate and friend. She participates in all school events and volunteers her time, including helping out in the kindergarten classroom weekly. Awesome. And helping to change the announcements in the Chabot marquee every month. She is also a member of the Chabot Green Team. We are proud of what she has accomplished during her time at Chabot and we are excited to see all the wonderful things she will do in the futures and all the amazing places that she will go. In any event, the governance team joins Castro Valley Elementary School in honoring you as an outstanding student. So this is for you. All right, and you can keep that too. Do you ever need some words about, you know, in terms of you, you can pull those out, okay? All right.
Ilah, before you sit down, do you want to introduce who's joining you tonight?
So there's my parents and my grandparents and my kindergarten teacher and my current teacher.
I would like to go ahead and invite Mom, or as she's also known, Jennifer Hansen up here. The governance team, along with Chabot Elementary School, are proud to recognize Jen Hansen. Jen has been a gift to the Chabot community for twelve years. She began her time as a Tiger Mom back in two thousand eleven when Quentin started kindergarten. Soon after, Drew joined the Tiger Pack in two thousand thirteen. And in two thousand seventeen, Ramsey became the final Hanson to get her Tiger stripes. Over the years, Jen has supported the education of her three wonderful children as well as offered her talents and time to so many of the Chabot programs and activities. As you know, musicals are a highlight for our Chabot students and community. Jen has always been willing to help support our production in any way she can. Her sewing skills have been a huge blessing in helping with costumes and her keen eye behind the camera has led to many amazing moments, moments captured for yearbooks, musical posters, and much more. Her creativity and joy for the arts doesn't stop there. Jen was a volunteer for the Fame Program, which supported the teaching of the arts in the classrooms. She prepared and taught lessons in the classroom to share the wonderful world of art and music. Another amazing contribution stems from Jen's love for gardening. The passion of hers has provided Chabot with a truly beautiful outdoor space where classes can learn about nature and science. She has been the green thumb of the Chabot garden and she has led activities educating students about gardening and composting. The list continues, as we recall, the many other activities such as Shriekarama, Tiger-Thon, Walk and Roll to School, Track and Field, and Field Trips. It is no surprise that Jen was there to volunteer her time to make these events memorable for the students and families at Chabot. Her contribution over these past twelve years has been a wonderful gift for all of us at Chabot. The governance team, along with Chabot Elementary School, are proud to honor Jen Hansen as an outstanding volunteer.
Jen, besides your wonderful son, who we are so honored to know, is there anyone else joining with you tonight?
I have my sweetheart over here, Ramsey. My, my other son is busy being a spirit boy, as Quinn will, also on Friday night, so. I just, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I, I love this school. I can't believe this is my twelfth and final year as a Chabot parent and I'm probably going to be back for the musical because I really can't say goodbye to that. I'm so very aware and so very grateful of everything all of you have done to make these kids what they are and I'm just just, I just can't say enough about how much I love this school and everything I've done has just been pretty exciting.
Do we have any board comments? Student Board Member Hansen.
Just that Chabot is near and dear to my heart. I spent kindergarten through fifth grade there and it's nice to see some of my old teachers in the audience out there. Ms. Howe, who is also the fifth grade teacher for Drew and now currently Ramsey. So a lot of Hanson kids have been through her and through the school in general and our Student of the Year, Ella, or Ilah, Ilah, sorry, gosh, Ilah. Hearing your accomplishments in your presentation is just, it, it always makes me think about how, you know, little I did in elementary school. I mean, I, you know, had a small role in the musical maybe, but, uh, I mean, considering that I got to this point not doing anything in elementary school, I know that you're going to go far and that you are going to accomplish a lot of things. So keep up the fantastic work. You should be very, very proud and just keep being an amazing student and showing your tiger pride. And of course, my mother, Jen Hansen. I know firsthand the commitment that she has put into making my time at Chabot wonderful and my siblings as well. Whether that be her dragging me to the garden to garden for a couple hours, maybe, maybe up to four as a third grader, which, you know, looking back was a good, good a character-building experience, but at the time, that have, uh, might have not made me so happy and as well as being a guinea pig for some of your very, very impressive costumes that you've developed over the years. That, um, that's also been something that I'll hold very near and dear to my heart and Chabot is just a wonderful place. I know the memories that come out of there firsthand. I know our students, some of the students that I was friends with in elementary school, I still talk to at the high school. So it, it really does bring lasting connections to our students and it's a great place to be. So thank you for the presentation.
I, I love hearing about your theater program. Over the years, I've heard so many wonderful things about your theater program and I remember when I had kids in elementary school at Benoit, I would constantly think, how can we do this here? This would be amazing. Like, and I, I just, I, I kind of long for the day where we could see this sort of thing happen at all of our schools because it's really remarkable and I, just the, the fact that you have such a high participation rate is testament, not only to how, you know, good the program is, but to how needed it is. You know, so I, I really applaud all of you who, to, who touched that program and who make it happen and I'm actually really looking forward to coming to see Treasure Island. I think I'm coming, I don't know, coming, it's on my calendar. Anyway, I am coming. And yeah, so thank you for coming to share that with us tonight and yeah, every time I hear from an elementary school, I kind of wish my kids were in elementary school again because it's so fun. All right.
Well, thanks for a great report. That was, that was really nice. I was really impressed by the fact that you showed our strategic guidance up there. That's really important to all of us and are the touchstone for all the education in the district. And I was really impressed by the fact that you have these extracurricular activities that are so all-encompassing, but in the arts and the sciences and so forth. I think that's, those are the extra steps that bring parents into the school community and that's the magic dust that separates good schools from great schools. So thanks very much for all the work you guys do over there and especially to Ilah, Ilah, I guess I made the same mistake, sorry. Ilah and Jen, congratulations and thanks for all that you did for the school.
Hi, everyone. I have a few things to say. Um, it's great to see everyone here tonight and Trustee Howard and I had our first meeting yesterday of our budget facilities committee and we were talking about how can our schools be kind of a, a center of community? A, a real sense of that you're connected to it. And one of the things I'm grateful for is how Chabot really activates our community. And you see it with the Science Night, you see it with, 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 with the musical. The Science Night was crazy. Like, it was crazy all. There were so many people there. It was like Shriekarama Part Two. And to see such a successful event the first time around was wonderful and to see our high school students there, right? It's, it was a wonderful effort on your part and I do hope that becomes a tradition. Ilah, I just want to congratulate you for all that you've done and Ms. Howe's a pretty awesome teacher, isn't she? Yeah. Were you, oh, I, you're, you will look back on elementary school and being, you'll miss it. And I hope that you, you take with you that, that tiger pride as you go to, to middle school and I expect a lot of great things from you. Jen Hansen, I met you first when I was the coordinator for Shriekarama and you just sort of did your thing with the garden and it was wonderful with the haunted garden and what's amazing about you, you love your family. That's so clear. Like, your family just really inspires me. But you're not looking for anything other than just to do, do the right thing, whether it was, you know, scouts or at Chabot. So I just want to thank you for all of your contributions to the Chabot community and, you know, I was thinking about the musical and what a special, it's a part of the culture in that school and I think everyone in our community deserves to have the type of experience, you know, a real community school. And one of the things I'm most grateful for, and I, I know you all know this is very personal for me, was my mom was able to see my son Teddy perform and that meant so much and that will always stay with me. I often think about that. And that was the last time she spent time with him. So I just am grateful that she was able to be there and I want to thank you for all that you do to create a beautiful community. Thank you.
I first want to thank the amazing staff and Dr. Hussani because it, and, and the parents, because it takes a whole community to do all of these things. So it's, it's an amazing place. Your spirit is just off the chart. So it's, it's an amazing place. Your spirit is just off the chart. I love it. Uh, and I, and I think just it reflects what you do, but it also helps the students understand why this is so important and how much they love the. The school drama. I love the fact that it really. Um, does so much for the growth of the students. It's not just, it's not reading a book. You have to, you really have to understand. There's so much collaboration and it's so important. And that it's incredible. The, the creativity in the science program and all of the things that, that you had, not just. With what the students did, but also be involved as they come to this event, just great, great things all the time. Um, I wanted to thank Eli, you're going to be an amazing student when you get to high school like. You know, I know Quentin said he didn't do anything in elementary. I doubt it knowing him. But you, you are a great student, but I love the fact that you care about the environment and you care about just people. That's wonderful. Now Ms. Hanson. I can't even imagine how much you have done in the 12 years. But I have to tell you, one of the things that maybe wasn't included in there. But it's raising such amazing, an amazing human being who's sitting up here. It's, uh, it's been an honor to work with him. He's incredible. Um, and we're just really lucky to have him and we're lucky to have you raising such a wonderful young man. Um, so I just wanted to share that with you. I think, um, you know, like Quentin said. It, you know, he always, he's very humble, but you have been a big part of who he is. So thank you for everything you've done for the entire school. And for this world. Thank you.
I'm always last, so I, there's not much more I can say except ditto. I'm so glad to see all of you. Congratulations, Ela and Jen, congratulations. Um, Dr. Hosseini, would you like to introduce your staff? We would love to see who's here tonight and say a little hello. I know we'll have a break in a little bit, but um, you know. And I know sometimes it can be embarrassing when we call you out, but you know, I would, we would just love to see who's here and support.
We have Ms. Howe, we have Mrs. Labang. Um, we have Miss, Mrs. Israel and Miss Emanuel. And are there any other Chabot staff in the audience?
We have some of our musical directors here in our audience as well. Um, would you all stand up so we can give you a round of applause, staff and honorary staff? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate you all coming tonight and we do appreciate your spirit. And we will move on now that we've talked about Jen so much. We get to hear from her son Quentin.
Alright, around the district, students enjoyed a restful and relaxing spring break. CBE is having an art night tomorrow from six to seven thirty. Students and parents will be participating in interactive art. Stations and they will also have the Adobe Art Center open for an art show by our fourth and fifth graders. Stanton is having a unity assembly this Friday. Stanton is also having a Earth Day cleanup on April twenty second. From nine AM to twelve PM. Chabot's annual walkathon Tiger Thon is coming up on May fifth. Uh, Chabot Spring Musical Treasure, Treasure Island is beginning its performances next week. Statewide testing is also commencing this month, featuring popular and exciting exams like the CASP test and the SPEC test. CBE's April Online Book Fair is starting on April fourteenth. The District Student Leadership Alliance met. Before spring break and discussed topics like the LCAP and financial literacy. Over at the high school. Vice President Cousiak along with Mr. Luango stopped by the CVHS leadership class to talk about important topics like equitable grading. Our school, community and fentanyl. Uh, ladies' flag football game is taking place this Friday at the CVHS Stadium at seven PM. Come watch our freshman junior team take on the sophomore senior team in a friendly flag football game. Also, the spirit boys will be featured. So if you would like to see yours truly. Uh, yours truly along with many other dedicated and spirited CVHS students cheer the game and come watch this exciting competition. Friday at seven PM. Seniors are getting back their college acceptances. A time filled with excitement, disappointment and a ton of nervousness for our students, to put it lightly. So far, students have received acceptances from notable universities like UCLA. USC, UC Berkeley, Cornell and Brown University. As well as pursuing higher education at community colleges like Chabot and La Spacitas. And finally, students are looking forward to AP exams, SATs, as well as the. Famous and ever so loved SPEC test happening this month and early May. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few updates from our office. Um, today actually Dr. Raymond, Ms. Rishichi and Mr. Luango and I were invited to visit. La Spacitas with the president and his entire team. They shared some really, really great data. Uh, with us, which we'll have access to, but we talked about a lot of opportunities. For our students who choose to go to La Spacitas or Chabot, but it was a really great. Visit and it was just basically an invitation for us. Um, I wanted to say just a couple of things about Proposition Twenty Eight. Which is the art and music. Uh, it was a proposition that the voters voted for in November. Uh, we've been busy meeting with our teachers who are experts in these areas in, in arts and music. Um, and we have discussed several great things that we could actually provide for our students. And one of the things that has, has really come up a lot is. Art and music in elementary school. Uh, from our high school teachers as well as our middle and elementary schools. We've also at the same time, we are, we did a thought exchange and we have had three hundred twenty four people participate. I hope some of you are there and so it means that those three hundred twenty four people have shared like twenty, two hundred seventy seven thoughts. And then people kind of say like, I like that idea. I like this idea. So we're seeing the same pattern. About music and art in elementary school, something like a, someone who actually oversees all of this K-12 and thinks. We're on the same track and I'm really happy to say that. Um, many school districts have not, might not have started planning. We feel it's really important to be on track. Um, we have a little bit of time and we can slow down a little bit on the planning, but we want to make sure that we're ready for next year. So I just wanted to. Share that. Um, we're very excited about that. Um, the funds from Proposition Twenty Eight have to be spent only on art. Uh, with eighty percent of them basically on staff, um, new programs and new staff. Uh, but employees. Um, the other thing I wanted to just remind everybody tomorrow is the Chambers Chamber of Commerce's Student Citizen of the Year. And it's going to be really exciting. So there's one student from every school. Um, I do want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. I know our trustee, trustee Howard is actually a member of the Chamber of Commerce and has been very involved in this. So. We're excited to be there tomorrow and on March thirtieth, we had compassionate dialogue. Um, uh, training for the community and I can't remember how many people, but it was online and it was a really, really great. Training and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to do more of that. Um, we had quite a few people and, um, uh, community members who really enjoyed it and, and asked for more. So that's it.
Thank you Superintendent Amati. Now it's that time where we get to take a recess. So if you need to go do homework, grab dinner. You're more than welcome to, but we do have a great agenda afterwards. Um, we get to hear from our employee associations, some public comment, consent agenda. We're going to hear about our CBUSD Padres Unidos. Uh, our elementary African American Parrot Advisory Council update. Um, we're going to talk about the personnel report, approve a member of understanding between CBUSD. Um, and the Tiberio Vasquez Health Center, pretty exciting stuff. We're going to approve or. Talk about approving, uh, the arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant. Um, talk about budget development process. I know that interests a lot of people. Um, and then we're going to consider the adoption of a revised day of regular board meetings. Um, for our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and consent adoption, the date and time of regular meetings for next year. So all exciting stuff. But we will take a recess and be back at six forty-five. Hello everyone and welcome back to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We will move on to our California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Do we have a CS, no CSC rep and no CDT rep? Alright. We will move to public comment, not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment not on the agenda Amy? We do not. We will move on to item ten, the consent agenda.
I would move for the approval of the consent agenda. Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Or Member Hanson?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Cousiak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes five zero. Now we will move on to reports, discussion and action items. And excited to hear about our update on the CBUSD Padres Unidos.
Yeah, we're excited to have the presentation. So I will ask our wonderful principal. Ms. Delatorre to come up with her team to tell us about Padres Unidos.
Buenas noches. Thank you so much for letting us present this evening. Um, I do have to say that these ladies have just done amazing work. Um, I, so Padres Unidos. Um, in, as you know, it's been in the high school and middle school for, for a while. Um, and so when I became a elementary administrator, it was like, we need this. Um, in our elementary schools. So, um, in the pandemic, way back. We thought, how is a way that we can engage our Hispanic families? Um, and at that point, there was really no way to really communicate. So it was like, what platform could we use? So. We implemented the, you know, wonderful Zoom. Um, and we got families to come together. And so we started at Vanoy with a few families and then it was like. We have a very small Hispanic population there, so can we expand it? So. Someone knew, someone from CBE, someone from Marshall, we said, let's go ahead and make it include all of our families. So we did have a great turnout. We had a few presentations. Um, we also brought in DLI to let our families know about the program that was going to be starting. So I want to call that version one point O. Um, and so when we were thankfully able to come back together. The birth of two point O, which these ladies just did an amazing job. the birth of 2.0, which these ladies just did an amazing job to be able to come together. And the goal was to bring information to our families, give an opportunity for our families to come together. So I will pass it on so that they could show the amazing work that they.
Well, thank you, Ms. Delatorre, and thank you, everyone. Please forgive me. I think the allergies are kicking in, and I have a little bit of a rough throat. So thank you. And like Ms. Delatorre said, we have made a team when Tilsia came about. And I, both of us came this year, and we decided to revive, to enhance with Doris' blessing, the Padres Unidos, and to continue engaging the Latino community. And together, we came up with the philosophy, and it's right there for you to see. When Padres Unidos and our schools work together, the lives of students are transformed. Working together will ensure the success of our students. So the little poster on the left-hand side of the slide is an E, so it's, she has an E so that she places outside the room when we have a meeting, and the parent, that's the first thing parents see coming in. And it's all done in Spanish, so it's an extra bonus for them. And without Tilsia, I came with 33 years of experience, and mostly with Title I schools engaging the Latino community. But without someone to call upon those families, it would not be impossible. So I'm going to have Tilsia explain to you how she does, what she does, that everyone shows up at these meetings. Thank you, Tilsia.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, it has been like almost a year that I've been here for the first time. And, and it's not easy for me to be here. But I, I can tell you that it's a pleasure for me, working for, for, for Didermina, for, for, for Dori de la Torre, for all of you. And when Nick approached me about this program, I thought that it was like a very good opportunity to expand the network that I created to support other programs like mariachi, food distribution, D-LAG, DLI. I create lists of each school with the parents, with the parent, with the Spanish, with the Hispanic community. And and for me, it was like expand, expanding the engagement of the Hispanic community. And I create lists and update all of those lists with the new program, the, the, this program. And, and we have, I have many lists, because you know, we have nine elementary schools, three Title I's. I contact parents in different ways. I, I send emails through Parent Square, emails, texts, and I always follow up. What I like is follow up all of those, all of those texts and emails. And I always call. I make that phone call, and I call my personal touch. And people like that. And when I call, I make sure that I explain parents the importance of attending these meetings to help their children. And for me, it's like selling something, you know, you just, I just make sure that parents understand the importance of the information. And I always ask questions. Do you know about this? Do you know about that? And they said, no. And I take the time, and I don't care if it's 15 minutes, half an hour, but I take the time and I explain the information that will be in the meeting. And, and the benefits that if they go to those meetings, the benefits for them. Because you know, if you are informed, you know what to do, if you know the tools, if you know the, what is offering the district, is very important, because you know, that will benefit the children. And for that reason, I take my time explaining families and parents. And sometimes they come to my office, and I just take so much time, but I do what I am supposed to do. As for logistics, I always ask families to confirm their participation. Why? Because I want to make sure that we have a forum, that we have people participating in those meetings. And I tell them that we have raffle with very nice items. Yeah. And that we provide childcare. And we noticed that people were not coming to the meetings, because they have to cook dinner after that. And we talked to Gigi, and I talked to Gigi, and I said, Gigi, it would be nice if we provide some food. And we started bringing like a dinner, pizza, salad, something, but they are happy with that. And the childcare is also very nice, because we have two ladies that work here as, as parents in different schools. And they do a very nice job with, with, with the children. We always provide the box with, with games, and you see children that are very happy with pizza and games and all of that. And so far, we have seen like a very good attendance, like it's amazing. The response has been incredible. You will see a few clips from people that participate in those meetings. And, and it's really amazing to see that people really like those meetings. They are asking to have those meetings two times per month. It's too much, but I think we cannot do it. But we are going to keep one, one meeting per month. And it's all that I do is nothing amazing, but I just like to follow up. It's follow up, follow up during that phone call, and that's it. And we have good participation.
She's, as you can see, she's a very humble person, because that's not a lot. She's on the phone and on her computer, on her personal phone, so she does a lot. It is a lot. She just says, you know, we need those parents at the table. And I think you all agree that we need the voice of the parents, all the parents at the table. So how do we, how do we put together this presentation is, we offer the parents what they asked for. The very first meeting that we gather, we ask the parents, what do you want to learn? And we did it in a way that we, we performed a skip, a friend of mine, and Tilsia. And we did a parent teacher conference that was badly done and one that was greatly done. And so after that, we asked the parent, which one was, everybody knew, which one was the right parent conference? And they, I said, okay, so do you know what questions to ask your teachers? And they said, no. Would you like to learn? And they said, yes. So from that meeting, we, we developed a list of items, a list of themes that they wanted to learn. So every time we come together, we bring those, the first brainstorming sheet, and we start crossing things out, because we want to create that trust, to make sure that they understand that they ask for something, we're able to provide, and we are providing the things, the very things that they, that they, that they want to learn about. And we do it in Spanish, too, for many reasons, but one, and I said that in the first meeting, so they understand the importance of their mother tongue. To me, that's really, really important. And also to avoid meetings that are three hours long. If you know the translation, you know it's going to be two hours long, or something is going to get missed. So that comfort, they ask their questions, and we all are bilingual, so it's very comfortable for them. And like she said, we make like a festive environment. It's like a mini fiesta every time we meet. And they really do have a good time. And as you can see on the board, those are the items that the parents had asked to learn about, about the LPAC, about how to reclassify the student, the dual-language immersion, ilac, the ilac, things that are really important for parents to understand. Special education, and then they asked us to change the meeting time to 6:30, because like Tilsia said, they were coming from work, and they were rushing to the meeting. So we changed it to whatever they felt was a more appropriate time. One item that is not there is technology. We did a meeting about technology, because we, I, I was tracking the usage of the platforms that we all spend a lot of money on. And I realized that the usage was really low. And I said, let me ask the parents if they know what platforms the district has spent money on, and that their kids should be using. And sure enough, they did not know. So that meeting was successful. They did not ask for that one, but I thought, is, this is the right, the right place to talk about those things. And I asked them to tell me they liked it, and they loved it, and they wanted to hear more about technology. So that's how we perform our service to our families. We ask them, what is it that you want to learn about? And thankfully, we're well-equipped to deliver on what they, what they need. And I will have you and the absence of them here present. I have three parents, four, but we're not going to play the last one, because it was kind of funky. And please forgive me, it was hard to put technology and translation at the same time. So I'm going to try to do my very best. Their voice is going to be very, very low, but there is transcription in English. So let me see if I can, I can pull this. And no. Oh, it sounds right. You guys said that it was, it didn't sound right. All right, so I'm going to try to do this. So please, like I said, ah, translate, auto translate in English. So you will see what she says. She's a new family. Here we go.
Hola, mi nombre es Adriana Corona, y yo tengo dos hijos aquí en el distrito de Castro Valley. Me siento muy agradecida por el programa de Padres Unidos que me invitó Tilsia y la señora Guillermo. Han sido reuniones donde yo he aprovechado mucho, han tenido mucho conocimiento y mucho aprendizaje para mí. Y también una de las cosas que me gustó mucho es que yo recientemente soy un padre nuevo en este distrito. Entonces gracias a este programa pude conocer y tener conexiones con otros padres para poder ayudar a nuestros hijos aquí en el escuela. Gracias y les agradecemos mucho por este programa.
Okay, and for the benefit of time, we're just going to play those two clips. And no, she, oh, two, that's, that's it. And let's see, ah, this is where I'm going to mess up. I know it. I need to go to the next slide, and I don't know how to do that. Because I've been, I've been practicing this. There we go. So these are the, thank you. Thank you so much for, for my humbling the ball here. So like I said earlier, we have a calendar of activities the whole year. We have done four meetings so far. We have two more coming up. We will be presenting about the LCAP in our next meeting. And then on, on May 4th, at their request, we're going to bring together different services that we offer in our district, a pair with a lot of our partners, like the family, family, what is that? The Borcio Vázquez Clinic, the libraries, etc. So the parents know what else, what can they do during the summer months that are coming up. So that's what we do for the elementary, for the elementary group. I hope you enjoyed our presentation. And now Señor Luongo is coming to the next part.
Super quick, just wanted to emphasize that all this great work is going to carry over into the middle schools, where we have existing programs at Canyon and the high school. And so just wanted to get a sense of some of the things, and you can see in the slide deck, is that some of the things they cover in terms of helping families learn about how middle school and high school works, and how they can help their students transition even beyond high school, and look at all the different opportunities that exist. So nothing really more than that. Really just want to celebrate them and the work they're doing. Great team, and really appreciate you all. And don't leave, don't go too far, because they may have some questions for you.
But before we end, I do want to acknowledge just two quick things. One is, I think the presenters were a little bit humble, because we really have an amazing trifecta for Padres Unidos at the elementary level. So just three years ago, we did not have an elementary Padres Unidos program at all. And really, Doris de la Torre took it upon herself to build a program for the first time at the elementary level. It was something we've been doing, hearing sessions, listening, type of listening session with our Latino families for a number of years. And that was part of the input. That's something that our families wanted and needed. Then bringing in Guillermo and Tilsia. If anyone's ever worked with Tilsia, I can tell you, you cannot resist. If Tilsia brings you in to a program and wants you to come, you will be, it's irresistible. You cannot avoid coming to the program. So she's been absolutely phenomenal. We had over, I believe, over 70, over 70 families at our last three Padres Unidos programs. And Guillermo has been providing all of the content at all of those meetings. She's been presenting at every one of those meetings, bringing in guest speakers and providing very valuable information. So I just want to add that bit of detail, because I think they were a little humble on that part. But thank you, three of you, for that.
Vice President Kuziak?
A few comments, and I do have a question. This is Delatorre. I was talking about you yesterday. I bumped into a Vanoy parent, and I don't know if you knew that you left this impression with me, but your own experience as a child, I'm imagining you, all those books that you checked out from the library, and your own language experience is always something that really resonates with me. And it's, it's really wonderful that you're able to give back in this way. And Tilsia, I was so overwhelmed the first time you came to this board meeting. I knew that you, we, we were so lucky to have you join our district. And it's obvious you're doing the right way in engaging this community, and I just want to thank you for that. I think one of the things that's important to me is a, is a white man in this community, in a community that historically has not been, I would say, at times, the most accepting, and it's a very diversified community, right? I think we need to acknowledge the history of this community. But the one thing that I, is really important to me is that people understand the community that Castro Valley has become. It is so much more accepting and embracing and diverse than I think a lot of folks outside of Castro Valley appreciate. With that said, I, I often think about the immigrant experience and like what we're hearing. I loved hearing about the role-playing, for example. What are like some permanent hurdles that we have in place? Like, maybe there's something structurally about how we're doing school in the United States or in Castro Valley that maybe we should get rid of that. I mean, what do we learn from our, from our Spanish-speaking families as they share their own experiences? Maybe we're doing it wrong. I, I'm just, I'm just curious.
And if anybody wants to answer, if we could, please come to them.
That's a really large philosophical question. It's a very Michael Kuziak question.
Yeah, maybe.
Sorry.
That we did when Tilsia came, I arrived maybe three weeks before she did. And then she came, and we started talking about what are we going to do here? P5 is far away from everybody else. What are we doing? And I says, well, we developed a little survey that she was asking every parent that walked in. And one of the questions that she asked Tilsia was, why don't you come to meetings? What keeps you away from the school? That was a very simple question, and what was the answer, Tilsia?
Yeah, they didn't feel welcome. They didn't feel like that, that they belong to any community. They feel like really like left out. And, and I always ask, why, why, why do they then come to the district and ask? And they said that absolutely that they were not welcome. And, and I said, you know,
So she says, we welcome you, and when you come to the main office, call, ask for my name. And she spent the first month, I kid you not, coming back all the way to the front office to pick up the family and bring it up to P5. So they went through the maze every time, because she, like I said, we really wanted to gain the trust of the people that we, that we brought in. And so if, you know, trust is hard to earn and easy to lose, right? And so we really tried to deliver on what we said. We made a promise that, I just call me, I will be there. I just say that, Tilsia, that's all you have to say. And the lady in the front desk would ring her up, and then she would come all the way down, bring the families, and spend hours with them. And so those families, I know that they have, if you were looking at the transcription of those parents, they have kids in elementary, middle, and high school. And we are trying to target those families so that they can diffuse that, the knowledge, so they can understand that, yes, they may not feel welcome, and sometimes.
And they said that absolutely that they were not welcome. And, and I said, you know, um, um.
So she says, we welcome you and when you come to the main office, call, ask for my name. And she spent the first month, I kid you not, coming back all the way to the front office to pick up the family and bring it up to P5. So they went through the maze every time. Because she, like I said, we really wanted to gain the trust of the people that we, that we brought in. And so if, you know, trust is hard to earn and easy to lose, right? And so we really tried to deliver on what we said. We made a promise that, I, just call me, I will be there. I just say that, Tilsia, that's all you have to say. And the lady in the front, uh, desk would ring her up and then she would come all the way down, bring the families and spend hours with them. And so those families, I know that they have, if you were, um, looking at the transcription of those parents, they have kids in elementary, middle and high school. And we are trying to target those families so that they can diffuse that, the knowledge, so they can understand that, yes, it may not feel welcome and sometimes it's a perception, honestly, and sometimes it's a reality. Absolutely, and you need to own that, we need to own that. Sometimes this perception is the fear of coming to a place that is new and sometimes it's a reality. So whether it's a perception or reality, we wanted to start breaking that apart. And so that's what we have been doing. I think those families feel more poised to come and speak at, at the schools. Now they can tell us, oh, I went to talk to the principal, which they would have never done before. But it was thanks to Tilsia that took that, all the steps. She probably did a lot more than 10,000 steps a day, on the days that she was coming up, up, up the steps, up and down the steps. So that's kind of one of the things, a small thing that we did.
I also want to say that, um, I always tell the families that I cannot, I cannot change the past, you know? Um, they didn't feel welcome, but I always said, you know, just move on and we are here even if I am busy. I am always here for you. You can call me, you can text, you can come here to the office. And now you see people going, uh, not through the, through the reception, they just go to my office, you know? And they always feel welcome. Um, also for food distribution, uh, people, um, we are getting so many good feedbacks, positive feedback, feedbacks. You know that, um, those make your day sometimes. Um, there are people that just go to my office just to cheer, uh, because they feel overwhelmed or something. You know, it's like, like therapy for them. But I am so happy, I am here, I do it with my heart and that's it.
I, I want to say a couple of things because when, when we talk about a welcoming environment, sometimes we hear, well, we invite them, they don't come to PTA or that. It's because you might think you're welcoming them, but that's not what's actually happening. If we constantly tell people what we want them to do, instead of what we have done is ask them, what is it that you need?
Yes.
I'm going to send a, uh, short video because we actually, uh, share, I shared it with our leadership team and I was gonna send it out to them. It's called schooling the world. And the, um, and I'll send it to you as well. But basically, the whole idea that we forget the amazing cultural assets that these communities have, that we forget, that we want everybody to be schooled this way. It's, it's a really thoughtful, um, short piece by Carol Black and then a film that's an hour. But that's what it's about because we remember how education was created. And I mean, this is a big discussion and we don't have time, but I just, I just, I think we need to acknowledge that when people say they don't feel welcome, it's, that's their, that's their lived experience. And that's why we are so careful about who we hire to support our families. This is why it's important to find the right people that can connect with people and empower them. So I know we have, yeah.
Do you have another question or comment?
Quick comment.
Okay, because that's, trustee Raymond's next and then.
I'll just say, I, I, if anyone in this district says they don't feel welcome to me as a trustee, that's a call to action for us to change something. And just thank you so much if you ever need this trustee or any trustee, I'm sure we're here to support you. Thank you for all of your work.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Trustee Raymond?
So, I mean, I, again, it sounds like you really diminish the work that you're doing because this is not a small thing. You know, making people feel welcome is huge to them, but as you're demonstrating, it doesn't take a lot of effort on, on our part to be welcoming, you know? And, and to reach out and say to a population, what would help you feel more comfortable? You know, why do you not feel comfortable coming? Um, why are you not feeling welcome? And, um, you know, this isn't the only community that I hear from that says, I don't feel welcome. Or I don't feel like anyone wants to listen to what I have to say or what my experience is. And so it's clear that, you know, there, there are ways to do this, you know, because you're doing it. And it's really, it's really remarkable. And when you talk about the various pieces of work that's happening in the district that you've managed to pull together into one place as a resource for the Latinx families in our community, it just is, it's mind blowing, you know? And it hasn't taken that long, like three years, you didn't have this, now you have it.
Yeah.
And, and, and our whole community has it and everyone benefits from that. And it's just really quite remarkable. Um, you know, I just want to say that the human connection that you're creating, um, you know, you call it to say your personal touch. It's really, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's the work of love, you know? And I, I think that it's just really a beautiful thing that this is extended into the elementary communities. I would love to see how we could start to learn from what you're doing and help apply it to, for instance, our special ed families. You know, and, and other communities, other, other, you know, groups throughout the district. Um, this is a really wonderful networking that you're doing, so thank you for everything.
Uh, just a few comments from me. Number one, I just want to thank you for the amazing presentation. And thank you for the tremendous amount of effort and work that's going into this, uh, program. Especially the using methods like skits to portray information, providing childcare and dinner, which I'm sure is important to a lot of the moms and dads out there. I'm sure my mom would be behind that for sure. All in an effort to ensure that our district parents and families are getting access to the important information they need. And, uh, hearing that this is transitioning to the high school level as well is very exciting to hear. I mean, high school is a big, uh, turning point in someone's, uh, uh, young person's life. And hearing that, making this information about college, which is already very, very complicated. And I myself get, have trouble understanding and add a language barrier in there and I'm sure it's impossible, you know? So thank you for ensuring that our students have access to all the amazing programs and the amazing experiences that our district has to offer in that. And, uh, thank you for all of the work you're putting in, thank you very much.
Yeah, we are making a difference.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Let's see, Howard, do you want to make a comment?
I'll just say very quickly that I do appreciate all the work that you guys have done. If this is the, the Hispanics are always a, a great interest to me because I'm married to a Peruvian. And so I'm always interested in seeing what you're doing and I think it's great, all the work that you've done here. I've been to some of the events, they've always been terrific, so thanks for all that work.
And lastly, I just want to thank you for your presentation. Um, and I'll second what Vice President Kuziak says, if you ever need us, um, we're happy to join, um, so just let us know what you need.
And I, I think it's just wonderful when they have celebrations for us to attend. Because it's important to have that time and they speak in Spanish, so they're comfortable saying what they need to say. But there are times where we would love to just, you know, when there's celebration and things like that to, to be there. And I know that you've been there before, so thank you, great job.
Thank you, and now we'll move on to our Elementary African American Parent Advisory Council update. Welcome.
So, good evening, board members, um, and e-cabinet and stakeholders in the audience, tonight, um, my partner in crime, Principal Ivana Rogers and I are proud to really present on our Elementary African American Parent Advisory Council. And what I will kind of validate and affirm is that, just like the Padres Unidos that wouldn't have never gotten started without the powerful, um, Ms. Doris De La Torre. Um, the same thing applies to Ms. Ivana Rogers and, and Mrs. Gina Faria, the principals at both, um, Marshall and at Stanton. Elementary African American Parent Advisory Council would not have been started without their energy, their push and their just hard work and heart. So I have to say that because it's so true. Um, so, but we're happy to print, uh, present on the Elementary AIPAC tonight. So just a, in a big picture of things, a little background, um, we started virtually with African American Parent Advisory Council in fall of 2020 pandemic, right? So everything virtual, um, and it really was a grassroots effort. Our parents, our African American parents said, you know what? We really want a place and space for African American parents to, um, build community and, um, communicate, get some information, etc., ask questions, but also just build community, build community. And so we now have families from all nine elementary schools that are participating, um, in the Elementary African American Parent Advisory Council. Um, what are we working on? So we asked our families, just like Superintendent Amadi was saying, you know, sometimes we think we know what people want to talk about. Um, and sometimes we actually really don't know. So we asked the question and really try to listen. And I think I've said to the, um, to the board before, sometimes we think we're better listeners than we actually are and it's a purely practiced skill. Um, so we said, you know, what is it that you would like to cover since this is, this is, we want this to be your meeting? Um, and the things that they said was build, can operate, multiple opportunities to build community, um, learn about programs, have an opportunity to ask firsthand both district and site folks about programs and policies. If we can, um, uh, build some mentorship, um, for our students into our programs. And then, again, back to what the board was just talking about, how do we continue to become a more welcoming and inclusive environment? So those are the things that came to the top every time. Um, so after first, starting virtually, we had our first in-person gathering. Um, it was, it was a fantastic gathering at Stanton Elementary with parents, um, community, students, all from the nine elementary schools really coming together at Stanton Elementary. Um, so, and, um, Ms. Rogers is gonna talk more, more detail about that. And then the Elementary AIPAC also co-hosted our Martin Luther King Junior District-wide event and also have hosted some family events, um, and play dates, because again, back to building community. So I'm gonna hand it off to Ms. Principal Rogers and she can talk a little bit more detail.
Thank you. Um, so as Ms. Shichi just said, we had our first in-person event in September of 2022. And it was a beautiful event and we had over 70 people in attendance. The kids were playing on the grass, we had wonderful food, there was just organic conversations, lots of, um, questions answered around schools and different events and all of that. Um, and it was lovely. Um, and then our next, um, one of our next events was that the Elementary African American Parent Advisory Council co-hosted the Martin Luther King Junior Celebrationals, our district-wide event. Um, and this was, um, held at the Center for the Arts at Castro Valley High School. And our main topic was No Justice, No Peace. And we had students who, um, presented, um, different work. So we had, um, some kiddos read poems, others said speeches. And it was really a way for them to share their voice for who they are as, you know, African American, Black students in our schools and in our community. Um, we had a keynote speaker, Tyson Amira, who is partners with the district. And we had a community-wide discussion and that was a wonderful event. I mean, here are some pictures from the event as well. And then we have had multiple playdates with a local organization called The Playground. There's an indoor play place right near CBE on the Boulevard. Um, and they've had a few different organizations in collaboration with us, but hosted by them. Um, and it's really been a place for parents and families to come together and kids play and the adults get to talk. And it's just a really, um, low-stakes way to build community, which was an ask that was at the, um, listening session that I attended virtually in 2020, was that parents really wanted a way to get together and get to know each other. And then that was what this was born, how this was born. So we give them multiple ways to do that. So some are, you know, events that they attend, um, like this. And some are more formal, as would be the, um, Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, but really just an honest way to build community. Sorry, I'm not matching up on my slides and the things, so give me one second, I apologize. Some of our next steps is we are going to have an end of the year gathering on May 19th, um, at Stanton again. Um, well, uh, information coming soon. And then we are planning for the 2023, 2024 school year. So, um, we are gonna be building that calendar and hopefully set out some meeting dates, uh, either at the end of this year or early next school year. Um, and we're really trying to gear up into having student mentorship opportunities, head governor, guest speakers, leadership opportunities and really supporting to develop, um, the development of the elementary, um, Black Student Union. So that's something that we're also going to focus on. And then this is just a snapshot of our different, um, groups and events. So, uh, elementary has our Elementary AIPAC. Um, there is our African American Alliance Network that is for our middle school families. And the high school also has the African American Parent Advisory Council as well. Um, and they have all held different events throughout, um, the school year. I think this goes back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. And so we, we wanted to make sure that you also knew that there are secondary program, uh, secondary parent groups, just like that, that were already in play before elementary started. And so our middle schools, um, have the African American Alliance Network. So for both Canyon and Creekside, they meet together, um, on a monthly basis. And again, information sharing, events, um, talking about some of our SEL, our social emotional learning lessons. Um, any community building events, again, community building celebrations and, um, information. And so that happens at our middle school as the African American Alliance Network. And then at the high school, they have an African American Parent Advisory Committee. And again, monthly meetings, talking about, um, sharing resources, information, building community. Um, that is the kind of common theme and pattern that we see throughout all, um, levels. And so that is the end of our presentation and we're happy to take any questions.
Is it okay if I chime in one more time, one last time? I do want to acknowledge, uh, Nia Rashishi. Um, Nia was a part of the planning both for the initial formation of the Padres Unidos as well as the Elementary AIPAC group. She didn't mention that, but because she never would. Um, and also Ivana, you know, all of the work that you do in terms of planning, it's countless hours that she does, planning and coordinating, submitting, uh, uh, all kinds of purchase requisitions and working with our bureaucracy. And so I just want to acknowledge all of the work that's happened for both of you, thank you.
Going to say, and you see the collaboration with, like, that, uh, the event at Stanton? You could see Ms. Dilatory was there, many of us, but I know, uh, trustee Howard was there as well. But it's just like, this is to support all of our students and everybody really, they, they share ideas and they work together. That's why this is working so beautifully. So thank you so much to both groups, it's, it's, it's absolutely amazing. And the, the power of affinity groups and what we do for them is beyond anything we can explain.
Vice President Kuziak?
You so much for this presentation. Um, I'm very mindful of how tough it is to, one, find teachers, um, and to find Black teachers in our district. And then I'm also very mindful of how small our, our Black population is at, at our schools. And that must be one of the challenges and one of the, why it's very powerful to elementary level to build this network. When, when you're not seeing, um, many people represented and whether it's in the classroom, whether it's peers or a teacher. So I, I just am very grateful for that. And one thing that was really, really moved me at the, the MLK celebration was just being there with my son. And he was hearing from one of his own classmates, reflecting on her lived experience. And I, I think that's, it's a very powerful thing. Uh, maybe I would just ask, um, you know, we've talked as a board about recruitment of, of, of more African American teachers. But are there other gaps you see for our Black students in the Black community, um, that, that, that this board should do something about or, or support you in, in, in your efforts?
I'll say two things, I think that, um, on, on the recruitment line, um, I think that Dr. Samura has set us up for success in regards to really recruiting and hiring, uh, more BIPOC teachers. Um, Black, Indigenous and people of color, that is, um, a board focus. And, um, Dr. Samura has done a lot of work to set us up for success in doing just that. So we are on the right track there. Um, as far as the one thing that I would say we are continuing to work on is around mentorship. Um, our families have said, you know, we really want to set up some mentorship. There's lots of mentorship programs, many of those mentorship programs, um, are in recovery from COVID, um, the COVID time. And so we, we are in the midst of developing some more partnership around mentorship for our students, um, um, in our schools. And that's just one area that I know our families have asked about and we haven't delivered on that yet, but they know that we're working on it. There's lots of ideas out there and we just need to solidify some of those.
Just gonna say, we have a huge, just a tremendous asset in this community of African American mentors. And that connection is so important, we, we have amazing. In fact, one thing I have to say this morning when we were at Las Pecitas, they showed us the, the percentage of students, our students who are actually going to, uh, to college, African American, all the different, uh, various ethnic groups. our students who are actually going to, to college, African American, all the different various ethnic groups. And the high percentage of our students, African American students going to HBCUs, that makes me very happy. So yeah, but mentor, we have amazing mentors and that is, that's such a key for our community to, to connect them to our students.
And just, just to that point, I was so excited to see the enthusiasm by our high school students, the BSU. They did like a career fair. I was able to help them out with some connections. And that's, that within their own community, seeing the importance of that was just wonderful to see. So thank you for what you're doing in the elementary level to just sort of create that spirit. Thank you.
So as I understand the elementary program, this is just the first year at Sun Running? No, sorry.
It's the third year.
The third year. I'm sorry.
Started off virtually.
Got it. I apologize for missing that. But I think again, just like the elementary Protestant is like three years ago, nothing. And now we have this vibrant program that could probably, it, it obviously can continue to grow, but it's really, it's remarkable. When you put your heads to something and say, we need this service, we need this community connection and create it, you know? Beautiful. And I think we've had two great examples here tonight about how we can do that in this district. And I'm very excited about opportunities right now. Yeah, and I was also at the MLK event and it was, it was fantastic. It was so, it's really moving to hear our personal stories, you know? And I think that's how people learn, you know? And, and, and I, I valued the time there very much. And I, I valued the kids who put themselves out there to share their stories because I know that can be very scary. Yeah. And thank you for all the, that work that you guys have done to make it happen.
I wanted to say a couple of words and this resonates with me quite a bit. You know, we talk about our goals. We talk about what it's important. And we talk about how we create a space where every kid feels welcome, has opportunity. And what's happened over the last few years, I mean, you all have been working on it a while, is I, I really want to say it's our people who are doing the work. It's people who care about doing the right thing, about regardless of who's going to say something back at us because they're not ready to move forward, that we're willing to take the chance to do that. And I, she's going to hate this, but Superintendent Amadi has made it a point to make everyone feel welcome. She leads by example. And she shows us all that we can create the world we want to live in. And that her leadership allows each one of you to be able to feel like you have a safe space to be able to do that as well. And, you know, the work that we're doing and the work that you're doing, it's going to matter in so many people's lives. People come to this district to work here because they're happy and excited to work with all of you because you're doing wonderful things. So I know you hate it. I know you hate it and you're going to be humble.
No, but I, I have an amazing team and yours and our board support and courageousness is why we can do this work.
I just, I want to put that out there because, you know, this work isn't easy. It's not sometimes thankless and you get feedback that can be hurtful. And through all of it, I want you to know that we're here to support you. Thank you for everything that you do. We appreciate it.
We will move on to the personnel report.
I move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four zero. And we will move on to item D, approve the memorandum of understanding between CBUSD and Tiberio Vasquez Health Center.
Yes. So we have the MOU. And so following the presentation you heard last month with Ms. Meadows. This is now the memorandum of understanding that really just looks at the facility side. The clinic will be utilizing two of the, our portables. And so wanted to memorialize that in this agreement. And as you can see, you'll, in the agreement talks about the term termination. I do want to know, and I should have said that in the beginning, we did revise this based on some information we receive or questions that we received. So, so wanted to share that with you and they're highlighted in red in the document. And so this is for your approval tonight. And so we can continue our work with TBHC.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Castro Valley Unified School District and the Tiberio Vasquez Health Center.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to make a quick comment, thanking everyone for making those couple of revisions to the contract. I think it's going to be a much more secure contract.
A five second comment. This is what you got to do. This is, this is what our kids need and having this access is critical. So I want to thank Trustee Howard, Trustee Theodore, I know, and everyone on the staff who, who made this happen.
Another five second comment, the students and staff at the high school are very excited to see this coming over to the high school. So we're looking forward to it.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Quentin, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Absolutely yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes as well. The motion passes five zero. And we will move on to approve the arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant spending plan.
Yes. So this is the spending plan included in the state enacted budget this year is the arts and music. It's a long name. So the arts and music instructional materials discretionary block grant. This is not the same as the Prop twenty eight that Superintendent Amadi mentioned earlier. This is one time funds that's included in the state enacted budget. Prior to the governor approving this budget, it was proposed as of May revised because of the influx of new money that the, the California received, that the state received. And so at that time, it was, the proposal was to give us unrestricted discretionary funds. And so we made use of those funds for the, for the, actually identifying the two that are included, that are in the plan, which is for, for pension costs, which is have increased. And it's not, we don't have any relief from the, from the state budget as far as the pension plan in the current year. And then we also, with this, an approval, the board approved an increase to the health and welfare costs for our, for all of our employees. So those two are, are in the plan. And so I do want to highlight that because of the name arts and music. But do you want to share that it's discretionary block grant? And it's up for the two that we identified are under number four, which is operational costs, including retirement and healthcare cost increases. So we are well within the, the, the required use for, 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 for these ones.
Did we receive any written public comments on this?
Yeah, I emailed them to grab this up.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't see the email. Okay.
And this is an action item?
I'm, I have a, I, I just also wanted to say that, um, I know that this is absolutely permissible use under the statute. And I know that a lot of work has gone into, you know, thinking about numbers, you know, et cetera, and how we should apply them. I am disappointed that there's no application of any piece of this fund to our actual classrooms, however. And I just feel like I need to state that here. So, and I, we, we have had, I mean, we had a wonderful presentation here tonight from Chabot to, and they shared their arts program. And I think that it is with, with, with setting aside the knowledge that we have Prop twenty eight funding coming to us. I, I just routinely find it disappointing that schools in general, and I'm not talking specific with respect to CBUSD, really give short shrift to the arts, especially to the kids who clearly really want them, you know, and, and really benefit from them. Having been, you know, the volunteer music teacher at Vanoy, the famed docent at Vanoy. You know, I, this is all, like, the education right now is really dependent on parents and dependent on our time, independent on our availability and depend, and dependent on the ability for parent clubs to fund that programming coming in and to, to a large extent. So I am really looking forward to discussion in the future about how our Prop twenty eight funds are going to be, be used. I think that the thought exchange survey that's gone out to parents is fantastic and a great place to start that conversation. And I'm, I, I, I did the survey myself, of course, as a parent. And I was really happy to see that people are feeling the same pressures and themes that I'm feeling myself with respect to how the younger kids in our, in our schools aren't getting that attention and time. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to prioritizing this, you know, in the future. But I, I feel, I feel sad looking at five million, six hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred eight dollars. You know, that, that, that won't be touching our classrooms. So I just, I, I did not feel comfortable, you know, voting on, on this, this item without sharing those thoughts with everybody. Thank you.
So ju- just a couple of things. I think something we need to share with the governor and we have is a lot of times they put something out and then they take it back. Like at first it was called art and music. And when every single school district in California, we all yelled and screamed and said, we want art and music. But where's the rest of the money for, for, you know, stirs and purrs and health costs, health benefits? We need to have, we need to keep our awesome teachers and employees here. So then what he did is he went back and did what he did, which is really misleading. And it's, it's not okay. But it's happened a couple of times where they've said, this is what we're doing, and then they've taken it back. And, and, and to be honest, it was pretty much like, okay, we didn't give you anything for this, so now you can do this. That's why they made a discretionary. I'm not negating what you mentioned. I just, I, I think it's really important to understand they're also taking some of it back, which is the, you know, the one point nine million. And this is the problem with one time money as well. I want to say for Prop twenty eight, I, we have had our expert teachers meeting for quite a bit, including our bargaining unit president and art teachers, music teachers. They've actually come up with a pretty good draft plan. And which I think is exactly in sync with what we are hearing from parents. Like we need more art and music in elementary. We need it more in middle school. We need it more. So it'll be great, but I just want to make sure we're realistic that, that we actually are probably one of the very few, if any, district that has already started planning for Prop twenty eight. So what I can see is a lot of districts knowing that they have three years to spend the money for the first year, not doing anything at all for the first year or next year, which would, you know, which is not what we want to do.
So just very briefly, and then I'll sit back. Yeah, I'm, I'm, obviously the governor has complicated this and I'm concerned that he will also complicate Prop twenty eight. And I, I agree that, you know, we, we have to deal with what we're given in terms of a resource. And oftentimes we feel we might not have any say in what's happening, you know, at the state level. But I would love to see us as, as a governance team do a letter to Sacramento about this as, as, as an issue. I mean, I, I think that, I think they need to hear from, from districts. And I know one district isn't a large voice, but it's, it's something. And I, I am, I just, yeah, I'm, I just find this difficult and problematic to be in favor of.
Vice President Kuziak.
I just wanted to thank you for the additional context you gave us tonight. I think that's really important and it helped me understand this. And to Trustee Raymond, I, 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 having been in the space of like local government and trying to figure out how California works, I think your, 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 your comments are on point that the state of California makes it very difficult for the average citizen and members of elected boards to understand what the heck is going on. And they do all these shenanigans. And we know that some of these shenanigans are the reason why places like Castro Valley are, and they built to incorporate because they come up with crazy rules at the last minute and there's all this trading. But I, I'm very receptive to what you were saying and I, I like what you were suggesting about some advocacy. And luckily we have a superintendent who is connected to some organizations that we can help amplify that message.
This is an action item?
I would move for approval of this agenda item. Yes, I moved it.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Board Member Henson.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
I'm really sorry to do this, but I need to vote now on my conscience here.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four to one. For the next item, the budget development process, I just, it's not information, it's actually an action. So just, we will be making an action voting. So I will hand it over.
Yes. So this is actually the, included in the packet is the, the spreadsheet that you've seen at the last meeting with just two highlighted dollar amounts there that these are the only changes that we've made since that last meeting. The first one is the, the high school CVHS, we've added a point for FTE counselor. And then under special education is an additional cost there towards staffing. And those are the only two that, the changes that we've made since the last meeting.
This is an action item.
I would, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Board Member Henson.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes five zero. And now we will move on to considering the adoption of a revised day and regular board meeting schedules for our board meetings.
Yeah, so you have it.
Move approval of this.
A motion has been placed on the table?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Is there a day at time which we are considering moving the meetings to?
Yeah, it's the same, say, we did talk about that at our governance team meeting.
I just can't remember what day we were talking about.
It's a Monday now.
Oh, when, it's still Wednesdays.
Oh, yeah.
Second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. Are you talking about the one in May?
No, I'm talking about adoption of the revised. adoption of the revised day of regular board meetings. This is the, I'm sorry.
This is just one day.
Yeah, sorry, it's the calendar.
Calendar we've already been following.
Correct. Yes. I'm just picking days for next year. And if you had any problems with next year's days, to let us know now so we can revise them.
Good, thanks.
Okay, cool. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Student board member Hanson?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes, and the motion passes five zero. We will move on to board member comments and reports. Student board member Hanson, would you like to share anything with us, uh, uh, in addition tonight?
Um, just that the presentations were great. It's great to see how Chabot and the various programs in the district are working so hard and seeing all the dedicated parents and families and, uh, educators who are working with that process to uh, benefit the experience of our students. And, um, yeah, I guess that's it. Thanks for the, thanks for the meeting.
Thank you, trustee Raymond.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll just, it's probably quick tonight. Um, I, I just want to say thank you for sharing some of the information about Prop 28 tonight. I, 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 I truly do feel good about the direction that is all going. And I'm really looking forward to seeing it take shape and seeing it hopefully not get clawed back in the May revise of budget from state. It, yeah, so I, we'll talk more about it later. Um, in the last couple of weeks, I attended the Alameda County School Boards Association meeting at the County Office of Education. That was a nice opportunity to meet and network with some other board members, um, from other districts. Um, and to talk a bit with, um, county superintendent, uh, Castro as well. Um, I also attended Lizardega's event, uh, to address the functional crisis in the community. Um, there were some really, really illuminating speakers at that event. Um, and I feel like I learned a lot that day, um, about just how serious this issue really is and how, um, I think we as a community and as a school district need to be prepared. And I'm, I'm glad that we are actively already working on that. Um, and, um, yeah, so I'd like to support any efforts we're making on that behalf. Um, coming up this week, I'm supposed to attend the chamber event tomorrow. Um, I'm gonna be going to the Chabot play. I'm very excited to have been invited to that. Um, I've, I've had some really great talks in the past couple of weeks with Gary, trustee Howard, trustee Kuziak, President Whitaker, and of course our superintendent. Um, and I really, I, I just want to say I really value the conversations I've been having since joining the board. I think they have all been extremely interesting, extremely enlightening. Every time I walk away, I feel more fulfilled and I, I, even though I, I, I gave a no vote tonight, I, I just want everyone to know how much I respect the effort that everyone in this room puts into the work that we're doing. And I also really respect and appreciate the time that we're willing to spend with one another to talk about the different issues facing our kids and our teachers. Um, so, um, that's just like a personal thank you, uh, to all of you. Um, and then I, I, this presentation tonight were really, really uplifting. And I'm, I'm excited to learn more about how we can see this play out in our community in different ways, you know, this kind of community engagement, this kind of community communication. Um, and I'm, I'm just very excited about it. So thank you. I'm looking forward to talking with all of you more about it.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. Trustee Howard?
So I guess we were all at the ZBB workshop a couple of weeks ago and, uh, yesterday, uh, is a long time ago, it seems like at this point. Um, and yesterday we had a, a very good meeting of the budget and finance committee with trustee Kuziak and others there. Uh, I met with the Eden area ROP superintendent for the planning session. And I just want to point out that Rotary on the fourth, which was a week ago, uh, we had PlayCV as the speaker. And, uh, they gave a really excellent presentation. That program has just blossomed. It's spectacular. They're serving over 800 students now. They have a terrific summer schedule planned. They've got, I think they said 110 or so employees, which makes them after the Eden Hospital in the school district, maybe the largest employer and one of the largest employers in Castro Valley. So I think as you mentioned and as others, uh, tomorrow is the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Student Citizen Award Lunch. And if you're available to show up, I know you might not be able to make it. I'm not sure, but I think you're gonna be there. Uh, that'll be really good. And tomorrow evening I'll be at the Eden area, uh, governing board meeting. And afterwards, believe it or not, we're gonna have a governance workshop. Very similar to what we do here in Castro Valley. So a new thing for the, uh, ROP. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Howard. Vice President Kuziak?
I'm really disappointed I can't be at that lunch. And I, I, that's the Rachel Maddow Award. That's, that's how I think of it. Um, my boss is in town from San Diego, so I, I will be spending some time with him tomorrow. But, um, I, I wanted to say to this board, I'm really excited about the budget and facilities subcommittee. Uh, we, we had a really fantastic start and, uh, we planted some seeds for our next meeting. And I, I think our intention really is to, to really develop ideas that we can bring to the board and really help, um, with our budget presentations. I think there's a lot in store for our community and for this board. And I, I want to thank trustee Howard for being a part of that. Uh, I did also go to the Liz Ortega event at the Hayward Library. I fentanyl, about fentanyl, that was terrifying. Um, and then I did meet with our leadership students. That was so much fun. And we had a pretty open conversation. Uh, we did, we talked about fentanyl. Uh, we talked about equitable grading. Uh, and just one thing I'll just put out there, uh, that I'm thinking about is, uh, how do we encourage ongoing engagement through homework and other assignments? I think that was a theme that came out of that conversation, uh, when it's not graded. And so how do we think about that, right? Uh, because there seemed to be, uh, hearing in some of the student comments, sort of a lack of motivation. But it's really amazing to hear how the students were thinking about it. Um, and so I, I just thank you to the leadership class. That's a fun class. Um, uh, comment, two comments. Um, I was not irritated. I was stuck in traffic on Anita today because I saw that they were building sidewalks. And so that made me very happy for our Castro Valley Elementary School community. I know that I think last year or the year before we approved an easement there. So it's really, um, part of the public health of our community that all people can walk down the street, bike down the street, uh, get to school, get to their home safely. And then lastly, editorial comment, I will just say that, um, I think we should stop banning books and banning people's identities in this country. And, um, I think we should be banning some assault weapons. Um, and to the extent that we can be, uh, supportive of that in our, as a Castro Valley Unified School District, I've seen our actions speak very loudly. Um, I hope we can, we'll continue doing that. So thank you.
Superintendent Amadi, thank you.
Nothing other than tomorrow you can bring your boss to the event. There's good lunch. No.
I'm picking him up at noon at the airport. I'm like the company Uber when all my friends from San Diego come up. Sorry.
I am sad and disappointed that I will not be able to be at the event tomorrow. Um, my boss is on a sabbatical and I am covering, uh, as executive director for all of environment, health and safety for my company. So I will be even less available over the next two months. Um, but I'm hoping to make some of the events coming up at night, um, as they come up. And, you know, I had great conversations with trustee Raymond, the meeting with, uh, superintendent Amadi on our, our board meeting. So, um, I just want to thank all of you for tonight, for your voices, our community. And yes, your tiger ears, uh, vice president Kuziak. And I wish you all a lovely evening. Good night.